We.
Approval of the minutes from the July 10th for you to move. Motion floor and a second. Any comments, questions? Call for vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Public comments or requests?
We have one piece of force comments that's in council package from Robert Everett III. List several concerns to make sure the city looks into or we see looks into regarding the penny park. Those are among the ones that were provided to individuals who are interested in leasing penny park. Look into and contact different state agencies along the way.
4B, use request down not law given.
Can we approve all of them on motion?
Yes, it's in here one item unless somebody wants to separate it out. I have a motion for a second and a second. Any question, comment?
Yeah, my only concern is look, it's their program and their process and Stephen know more about this. But it seems to be that just remembering the size of the crowds will end up at the amphitheater for the for the hometown banners program, hometown hero theater. I'm certain of the recording frankly, frankly, but that's that's their responsibility.
Any other question? Call for the vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yeah.
Or see resolution number 2023 dash 22. Do I have a motion? Motion floor and a second. Any questions or comments on motion? Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Or do you use of Tanna Park or William? What's wish council? I have a motion for floor and second. Any question, comment on the motion? Anything else? Call for vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Any other public comments or request? All right, we move to unfinished business. By the consideration of an agreement for architectural services.
At last council meeting, the majority of council moved to go ahead with investigating the Lockheed Police Department facility across the street from City Hall. And Scott Woodser from Hookar Horn is here this evening. The council has any questions about the proposed architectural agreement. It does take the city through the bidding process as well. They've handled that. Scott, do you have anything more to add?
No, just to thank you for having the opportunity. What's contacted on after the meeting last meeting, they let us put together the whole and we got there last week to meet with chief, the proper Mr. Goldbergh, you know, planning for their achievement proposal. But still, what we did is study that we continued with this background. We actually worked within the information everything was presented. That would be thought as a whole and it was a compliment that we can proceed with that for our.
Well, let's go to the council. Motion for a second. Question.
If we do not receive the million dollar grant, do we still, even though Scott, Luke are born, those are protective services, we still have a chance to say it's not funded properly or it is funded or this isn't a final yes vote. This is just for architecture sorting.
Right, but you would pay for the service.
That are listed.
Right. If you decided not to bid it, then wouldn't pay for bidding.
What I'm concerned about too is the exclusion of assumptions. It's like a full page if you added that to this. Yeah, who's going to do all the rest of that work or do you have to rebid that to somebody else? Or how are you going to get a cover those things?
We were, because we excluded assumptions in the eligibility issues we had against the property that we're going to do a sex survey. Get that on what can we walk the site? If you have a map that the city has and everything looks okay, except for maybe problems to for water. So there might be additional maybe permit for work on that state road. But again, we're on the employee's work. That's why the whole has some exclusiveness. You didn't see, there wasn't any reply during our initial meeting. We would request a year back and survey to move forward to propose all right. Again, we don't have an application condition for the battle line. And again, this probably doesn't save me. We look for the video, you know, after no one's heard of it. Project home baby, we will just go away and come back with a big document. We want to submit those in the base that are here.
It's surprising that I just counted and there's 27 exclusion of the function. So that's someone's got to do that work.
Well, we're assuming they're not. So, you know, there's no one like that's included because we don't feel the need. But if something come up during survey or your result for on this condition, you want to know it wasn't part of your project. Those are the things probably that are presented. Those things are not anticipated, but we do let them have exclusiveness just in case there's an outlier.
Just to see why I think you guys, we just don't want things to fall through the cracks.
Absolutely. We agree. We are trying to be complete based on the information that we have today. But we're hoping to get started with that survey and that investigation as soon as possible.
But I'm glad I'm in sight. This was strictly by sites available. I vote for it. I need to make sure everything can be done there. But I think it's irresponsible for us to spend money when we don't know whether we're going to get a million dollars or not. And then the appropriations bill might not pass. It does pass, it might not pass with that portion in it. And you know, you can't get reimbursed for expenditures that are done prior to being awarded for a grant. That's just my thing.
What's the timeline on the application of the awarding level that we would know even partway through? Because that's one of my deciding factors. If we don't get that, I don't know this problem as well.
The appropriations bill of the federal government is always to be adopted in October. Last year was adopted in December. That's pretty typical. That it does not get adopted on time by the federal government, but it does get adopted not long thereafter.
So Scott, your timeline for bidding and final design and all that can be aged so that we have some idea whether we're going to get that million dollars or not. So where do we proceed or not? You're not going to start now and be done by December, right?
No, the first phase would be that whole design and development and then schematic design. That first maybe $30,000 of RP and that would probably be about six to eight weeks to get that completed. We think the survey, but we have to keep that very good.
Any other comments?
If we start with the city hall study and the idea across the street, you know, what have in here? And we then go to two goes at a one hand in hand. And adding this proposal as well. How much in total will we have paid for architectural services?
Well, this proposal is for 173. You mean how much will we pay today?
Yeah.
I don't know that off the top of my head. If I could get back to you about how.
That would be, but but all of that is funded out of the 2.6 million dollars we borrowed.
Correct. Of which we spent 100 on the roof road, city hall, right?
Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 No. 5B, update on the solar development project.
Uh, here happy to update from the energy. Uh, they are, they are on the last step. We've been operation once they receive 100% operation and they will part three and four. And they can begin sleeping. And asking for a time limit. After the project, until they want to stop rotation, you get a final, so. Although for a whole year, at least. Except very much that. We'll be moving here.
Thank you. 5C, update on the use of opioids, selling funds.
The city administration has been reviewing a lot of the documents. It could be the eighteen pages of global regulations, the manager of the opioid prevalent line. Uh, the chief of police, excuse me, working with the community life director were able to put together a good Samaritan law, which is notifying the public about the good Samaritan law. Which for those who aren't aware, it provides that if an individual in good faith reports an incident to 911 of an emergency or another emergency official gives their name and location and stays with the person until the emergency assistance arrives, prevent death or serious injury. Then the individual who calls and the individual who is in medical danger are both immune from prosecution uh, for consumption or possession of alcohol or drugs. So notifying the public about the importance of this, of course, is believed to be something that can help save potential lives when people are in an emergency situation with alcohol or drugs. This is an idea then that was something that was discussed with county and Commonwealth University of Long Haven. Together at receipt of the rural health initiative grant. Part of the partnership on that is also the Clinton County Housing Authority. It's mad at the house and authority volunteer to some of their annual funds that they receive. To defray the cost of printing these door hangers for their specific sites. We don't have a great count on those because there are single bars who are built for the time we're going to get our counts or the university, we've been working with them as well for distribution of this both on campus and off campus. At the facilities that are owned by either the university or the foundation, which is another approximately 1100 door hangers. They come at a cost that is equivalent to about 13 cents. So if it's approved by council, that would be the first expenditure from the opioid settlement funds that the city will be making. There will still be remaining about 9,000 and this year it will be around 16,000 additional fund. From all the massive state settlement and then individual settlements like Johnson, Johnson. So if council is agreeable with a motion, then we would place the order for these and give them distributed hopefully in time for back to school students in mass determine really the bulk students from like the sentence. But they'll start coming back to their team with camps finishing up now.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Yes. Either disturbing, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have any other unfinished business?
Uh, I had none.
New business 6A, consideration of ordinance number 2023 dash 07.
Uh, council requested that the city's attorney draw up an ordinance of city council expressing its intent to acquire the water system from the Lockheed and city authority. And that would be both the water and sewer system and determine the Lockheed and city authority. It is the intention of council was to express to me that the intention would then be to primarily pursue a joint municipal authority and conjunction with Cassidy and Wayne counties as a means of moving forward to own and operate the water systems. In part to avoid having to go to publicly filling with mission. You get approval on rate changes, which will be required every year for the next 10 years.
What's the best bet? That. Motion for a second. Questions or comments?
That would have to read the whole ordinance. Letter obviously for the city manager and in state of July 11th. I'm only going to read the second paragraph. I think it's important to people who live here and paying water rates. Uh, every study performed by Raffa Peller, perhaps I'm mispronouncing that. But the city revealed that its lowest, at its lowest, the city system is facing average annual increase of at least 11% every year for the next 10 years, with some years needing to be higher than 28%. Making an application to the PUC every year for the next 10, for 10 years to increase rates adds an additional significant cost that will cause even greater increase. Whether it be forming a joint municipal authority or any other potential option proposed council leaves of the city's ownership of the utility system provides the greatest flexibility in finding the best solution for the systems and customers. So my comment on that first of all is that under the guidelines for the city authorities, city authority, we are quite we are able to pay for any costs associated with filing for the PUC. That's a given. If you had a bill for the PUC and that was forwarded to us, it would be reversed. I just wanted to put that out on the table. Secondly, the fact that you want to disband the city authority, we have no authority. The authority has no right to raise rate. So that's probably one good thing about it. The city has to go through the PUC ratings and review and to get a ruling to raise rates. There, and I don't think they want to do that. That makes bad vibes with everybody. It's been done before. I sat on council one year when we had to do it ourselves. But I should have introduced my, I'm Julie Hauser, I'm chairman of the Lockheed and city authority. And I'm not surprised that we received this to abandon, disband us. I'm not surprised at all. We saw it coming a year ago. I thought perhaps we would in fact have a joint authority by then. But until I saw a copy of a letter sent to Wayne and Cassidy accountants asking them to participate and perhaps send a delegate over, that was the first that I saw was a kind of movement to make a joint authority. But again, the way that the joint authority would be structured would be that that authority would have the ability to impose rate increases, which naturally having been that I am a city resident, I'm opposed to rate increases. Unfortunately, they're going to happen eventually. There's a lot going on right out there right now requires rate increases. The dams now being they're being renovated and we are in the process of drilling wells at almost a million apiece. To provide water when we shut down one of the dams hopefully. That's where we will get our water that will go through the filtration authority to be distributed through the system. And now there's a, I believe there's some sort of conversation or perhaps there isn't, but of joining the suburban and city water systems together. That was discussed years ago before we even broke ground on the filtration authority. And the reason we did not do that was because there is no, the quality, there's no equality between the two systems. When we had to put up the numbers to show how the, how the cities um, types and the lines and everything was built, it had no comparison with the, with suburban water. They would have to buy into our system to make it equal, to show that you could put them together. So we never did pursue that because they just aren't the same. Uh, suburban is constantly upgrading and renovating and fixing. And the city is gone unless of some catastrophic emergency with a big main might hurt. We're not in that position. Uh, don't want to say anything else. Yes, we want to disband the city authority. We're not power brokers. We don't do that, but we do make controversial decisions. If someone wants to go up on the watershed, which isn't really mentioned here. We want to know what they're going to do and what trail we're going to use. So we're in the process of delegating only one trade up there where everybody forgot. We don't want a new trail every time there's a new race. And the bike race, which was one and done, was monitored very closely. So we do have a bill to pay for that for the damage that was done. And we're going to absorb that. We are paying like all these are uh, forester who went up and monitored the land before they even got on it and discovered what was done. But we're going to afford that cost and not build the bike association because they promised us they were one and done. There would not be another bike race, bike race of them. And I guess I can leave it there. So, uh, but every time someone goes up in the watershed, there's damage. And watershed is what provides the water to the dams that provide the water to the lake. And one other thing we did when we, before we broke ground on the filtration plant was the city promised there would be no part to the water. That was the city's water. It is still the city's water. And it is free to the authority to disperse between the city and the burden. We didn't want to charge and we wanted to minimize cost of the year with the project. So if you have any questions, tell me I'm here. One other thing I would like to ask. We have a joint meeting with council and the authority. Um, and I believe to do that, we'd like to have you decide on a few dates. And you decide on a date, let us know. We will advertise ourselves to be at that meeting. And you will also have to advertise it as $100 on the frame. But I think that's the only way before everything is done and over that you might be able to ask us questions and we would be more than welcome to answer any, any and all questions. And we would also then find out what your intention is with employment or no. Or just banning this all again. So we, after, you didn't read it. So the people here have no idea what's involved in this perjury any ordinance. Um, but I did give you my opinion. Is there any questions to me?
Anyway.
I guess.
I will say that the letter that Ms. Hauser referenced is provided to remove the newspapers or publication, both the Lockhaven Express and the record received it last Friday. So that they have that information for any article they want to write. They also received the full copy of each resolution, which is also available on the city's website. And it's available for any member of the public to download from there. They can also stop by City Hall to pick up a hard copy of the evidence.
Okay, I did bring copies for the press. If anyone wants a copy of that, I did bring a copy for everyone uh, from Mr. Welton. So I did do that. Good. And that's that. Okay. Thanks guys.
Questions or comments?
I have one question. And I know we're working towards going to a joint municipal authority, but remind me why we have to do this right now before we have anything else lined up. I know there's a reason, but I don't remember.
The subcommittee made the recommendation to council that in order to make any decisions such as going and joining municipal authority or any other decision regarding the system, the city will need to be owner of that system. As the primary first step, this more for maybe it was more out of. Decision of council, um, uh, the subcommittee and the recommendation.
Thank you.
I've seen that pretty much. All this water legislation goes back empty years. Um. And it it's a real struggle to figure out what we can and cannot do, but. Great, right, yeah, you you cannot. Form a new authority. Which would be necessary to get out of Monday PUC. Uh, without first taking back the assets from the city. Cannot merge the city. Into a new. You cannot add members from other municipal entities into the existing municipal body. Neither of those things is possible. So we have to do this in stages, and the first stage is the city needs to be the owner of the asset in order that it can determine. What future uses would what those assets do. Long way saying what, great just.
No, I just wanted to remind you. Um, so this is on first reading. It's not complete. Um, the motion on the floor, second, any comments, questions? Call for the vote.
That's number five.
Yeah.
That's number four.
Yes.
That's number thirty.
Yes.
That's number sixteen.
Yes.
That's number three. That's number four.
Yeah.
They are all.
Yes. No, we'll have to have a second reading now from up the next meeting.
Yes.
Uh, six B, invitation to Cassidy and Wayne Township for the self-formation of a joint municipal authority, own and operate the water system.
That's also uh something that. Um, this is provided in the council package, which also goes to the press, just to update council that the letter was sent to Cassidy and Wayne Townships. Um, inviting them to engage in discussion on the formation of a joint municipal authorities. And um. So far, I have had correspondence and communication with Wayne Township and um one of the conference providers for Cassidy and I, of course.
Thank you. Six C, authorization to solicit proposals for utility valuation services to attain fair market value for our resources.
This is another portion of the recommendation from the subcommittee to council. And that would be um to authorize to solicit for proposals for companies to provide. Basically, an RFP to tell us why they would be the most appropriate entity for council to select if council chose to do a utility valuation on. The water and the sewer system. It's required in order to obtain fair market value for the asset.
Do I have a motion? So move.
Bring back.
The motion for in a second. Any other discussion, questions, yes?
So it's changing. That if you do not receive positive feedback from Cassidy and Wayne Township. You are willing to put the entire water system out of the bin to a private enterprise.
Are we willing to do that? I'm I'm willing to put whatever is debt for the citizen city.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that would not be good for the citizens of Lock Haven, the water users.
Well, we we would disagree on it.
Okay. Since you're identifying those of us who sit here, that we feel that you would have our best in your heart. And some would be out, they're telling me outside of state uh that would come in and purchase them. So I feel that you have a better attitude about what and where we would do to raise rates for the PUC. And could just tell you to someone else who doesn't care what you think to what I.
That entity is also subject to the U C.
What's more?
If a private company purchased it, they are subject to the U C, just like the city, so they can't just line their pockets.
No, but they certainly don't have to worry about what we say about them the next day over.
Neither does an authority whose members are appointed not elected.
That's, that's probably a good thing because we serve a good.
Well, I think we're running somewhat ahead of our horse to market here, um. You can't take any decision on how we would dispose of the, if we don't know what they want.
Answer your question, my standpoint, I'm not interested in selling a private entity. Um, I do feel that the joint municipal authority is a good move, but. We have to cross the bridge when we get there and start the process. Um, just giving you my personal feedback, I want to be.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second, we haven't voted yet.
No, sir.
Please call for the vote.
That's number five.
Yes.
That's number one.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 That's number four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Six D, notification of the intent to reopen the wastewater treatment operating agreements.
The city has an operating agreement um in conjunction with Clinton County Sewer Authority. And Clinton County. And the city also has operating agreements with Ball Eagle Township, Flemington Borough, East Nanty Valley, Joint Municipal Authority, Allison Township. Sorry, not Allison Township, Cassidy and Township, Mill Hall Borough and Woodward Township. Those are the entities to which the city provides treatment services for sewer. The partners in the Clinton County Sewer Authority, who are those entities that I listed, which can be along the list, um. Have voted in the majority to reopen the agreements between the city and those entity. Uh, Coplaw, Ryan and Howard is who the letter is from, they are also the solicitor for uh six of the, what, nine partners? And so a city will use outside the council to avoid conflict of interest and stop off Ryan and Hauser as well, so the city solicitor as well as the county. Um, Mill Hall, Cassidy, Flemington. And the Sewer Board, so um just to notify council that I'll begin the process of having some other attorney terms that we use. To consult council and see if they will be able to represent the city in the negotiations. Without having a conflict with interest.
Any questions, council? Six E, appointment of Robert Neff as auxiliary fire driver.
Robert Neff, upon his retirement, uh, would like to be appointed to the. Fire department as an auxiliary driver. For handed hand post company that was brought before the Lock Haven Fire Advisory Board, which recommends that. If council makes that appointment, uh, Mr. Neff would become an auxiliary driver effective September fourth.
What's which?
Move the way.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor, a second, any questions, comments? I'd like to say that we still didn't follow this.
And I wish he didn't get called away last meeting, so we could have thanked him properly for a year of service. Are we going to have a little something for him? That a citation or something at a future meeting closer to his retirement?
I'm going to look right into the camera and say, no.
Well, I did. But I think it should, about a year of service.
Yeah. Uh, I have a motion for floor in a second, call for the vote.
Yes.
That's number four.
Yes.
That's number.
Yes.
That's number sixteen.
Yeah.
That's number three.
Yes.
That's number four.
Yeah.
They are all.
Yeah. Six F, Roads to Peace potential funding uh from main funds, that's something I brought up to the manager last week.
Uh, this city council did. Put ten thousand dollars um in additional funds into the budget line item specific contributions. And so council does still have that ten thousand remaining. And uh, mayor asked that the article of Roads to Peace be included in the paper and uh potential some discussion.
But and it seems to me, I mean, I read that before, and I know something of the work that people do, they did not take that lightly. Um, we have those fund unclaimed in the budget, and I would propose that we. Invite um Roads to Peace to make a claim for that money subject, providing the same kind of evidence of need that our other. Um, nonprofits do.
Okay, that is a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, I appreciate it, when I read the article, I had a great class, we've been asking to put that on here. Uh, we, they're very worthy organization. Um, by the way, I want to consider that.
Any other comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Five.
Yeah.
That's number four.
Yeah.
That's number thirty.
Yes.
That's number sixteen.
Yes.
That's number four. That's number one.
Yes.
Now.
Yes, thank you, friends. Uh, any other new business?
I don't know.
Okay, we had the F Y I reports, authorities boards, uh, phase one updates.
Uh, those have been provided and keep rolling in, still on schedule, so that's good, um. Also, River Valley Health and Dental, uh, sending an invitation to council to attend their opening of the house. And then I would assume that all members of council would like an R S V P for the fair week timeout after a morning kind of fair, so I will send that off to. Even on the par per today, have the names of the.
Yeah. Uh, anyone else have anything to report back on? Anyone? And it's.